Call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the St. Peter School Board, Thursday, February 18th, 2021, in the St. Peter Community Center Governor's Room. It is a couple minutes after 6:30. And I've called this meeting to order, and so we will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Lord, of the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent, thank you. Before we consider a motion to adopt the agenda, I would ask that someone who makes that motion would consider amending action item number one to include the high school. Right now it says middle school learning model transition plan adjustment, and there are good reasons.
I make a motion to amend that to include middle school and high school learning module transition plan adjustment.
Excellent, thank you, Dr. Soderland.
Second.
We have a second by Member Dixon, Clerk Dixon, sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Would we consider request to speak on the agenda, seeing no one in the audience? If you do have questions, you can address the COVID information email that is on the school district website, and either board or probably staff will get back to you with those answers as quickly as they can, so. With that, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. And Superintendent Gronseth, is there anything that you want to pull out in particular?
I did want to just make note of the grants and donations section. There were quite generous gifts this month, $8,000 from First Lutheran Church, $2,000 from Jen Youth to go towards nutrition funding, and $50,000 gift from an anonymous donor. So $60,000 of donations this month, and we are certainly grateful for people's support of our schools.
Absolutely, thank you so much, yeah, that's amazing. And thank you to all those who made those donations possible. With that, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Seconded by Dixon. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We will move on now to our student spotlight. Our Student of the Month comes from North Elementary, Stella Bublitz, and I believe that Principal Dory is going to introduce her on the screen.
Good evening, Board Chair Leonard, members of the board, please. Everybody is hearing you, okay, here. My honor tonight to introduce you to North Spotlight Student of the Month for February. Her name is Stella Bublitz, she's a fourth grade student in Mrs. Friedrich's classroom. And every, well, three times a year, my best teachers nominate Spotlight students, and we got quite a few of them at this last forum in January. And our theme for the month of January was learning from mistakes. You know, like leaning into challenges and being willing to step up to a challenge. And the person that rose to the list, and I think people that like challenges, was Stella. And so that's why I asked, I agree. Stella and I met yesterday for about 45 minutes, to kind of practice our routine for the night. And we did, Mrs. Friedrich, I think she was already in call to office and saying, send her back, it's been an hour. Yes, we were talking for quite a while. But we did narrow things down to about four questions here, and I said, Stella, basically the board just wants to know about you. Do you want to get to know Stella? So first question, are you ready Stella?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for having me.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for introducing me.
So Stella, what do you, you know, the board members know that you go to school here in Portland, but what do you like to do when you're not learning at school?
A lot of things, like I do a lot of that because Darby usually dictates what we're doing, and I just build for her. And we both enjoy it quite a bit, and she lives in the makes in the office, it's fun. I help her do a lot of stuff, she doesn't like it, and I do help her do a lot of stuff. I read quite a bit, and yeah, I'm super crazy about pathology. And I spend most of my time talking really loud.
Yeah, we can hear you loud and clear. What about, what's your, what are your favorite things about school?
For specialists, it's STEM and art. I like them all, but gym for me can sometimes be hard. And honestly, I'm not the best at music, and sometimes it just bugs me that I get confused. Because I really don't like being confused. And I just really love school, though, I think it's so much fun. And I really don't like distance learning because I like school so much. But both school, but both what we're doing right now and hybrid were really fun for me. And lately, I was surprised because Mrs. Friedrich's starting, we're doing a poetry unit, and I did not realize I liked poetry so much until I started writing poetry.
So, and this is, if I interrupt, I'm sorry to interrupt you quick Stella, but I just got a really, I got a kick out of the poem that your teacher, Ms. Friedrich, sent me, because she said you were working on reading poetry and writing poetry. And she gave the example of some poetry you were using with rhyming, and she said, okay, fourth graders, let's try to use words that are easy to rhyme with, like, don't use words like orange, right? And so how did you respond to that?
Well, the first thing I think is, hmm, Ms. Friedrich, yay, let's write a poem about orange, because Ms. Friedrich says we shouldn't. So I, so the title of my poem is Rhyme Orange. And I just, I did this, don't tell me you can't rhyme orange, I say it rhymes with Florence and sporange. And I say, I can rhyme all day, don't tell me you can't rhyme with orange, because it rhymes with the orange. I've got a room full of things to rhyme, and I'll lend you a few if you give me a dime. I have guards to watch the door, but they give words away to the stick and pour. And I guess that's fine, but still, they're mine! And I wrote that because I wanted, it was, it's pretty much the exact opposite of what Ms. Friedrich wants to do. Because I followed her rules, but I made up my own, kind of, because I like doing that.
And again, that's another reason you earned this award here. What's, you know, what's your least favorite thing about school?
Answering reading comprehension questions, I don't like it. I can write them, when I have, when I get to write them down on like paper, that's really fun, because I like, because I get to use big words, which I like doing. And, but I just, I don't like talking about reading comprehension. I like talking about books, but I just, sometimes I just, I just get annoyed when I have to like, I don't know, it just, I just, I just annoys me.
We narrowed it down to teacher talk, right Stella, when teachers ask you things like, you know, what's the author's purpose and scope and sequence, and it's that stuff. We just want to talk about books, yep, exactly.
Because it feels like, it feels like, sometimes it feels like I got that in my head, and other times it's like, I just don't want to figure that out. Or I just don't want to think about that right now, I just don't want to do it.
All right, and the last question I have for you Stella, what's the most challenging thing you've ever done?
When I moved from Minneapolis to St. Peter. Because I had no idea what it was going to be like here, and I grew up, I spent the first seven years of my life in Minneapolis, which is a giant bustling city, and then there's these cute little neighborhoods. And then I come out here to move, like, in the middle of the country, where the most popular type of climate is cornfields. And your neighbors are at least down the road where, like, in the cities, the houses were so close together, you couldn't both have your windows open during COVID, because you'd be breathing right in each other's houses. It's like, really, it was really different, and also I was going to a new school in the middle of the school, which was, that was hard. And sometimes I just miss my friends so much, I just like, I just cry. I just, I couldn't even stop myself, I just sat on the floor and just cried.
Yep, that is definitely, we talked about, we share that similar challenge in both the same grades. All right, and the last piece here Stella, you've done a great job. Why don't you introduce your family members?
Want to be interviewed? You put her? Oh, no, okay.
Oh, Darby's mad at me for saying that I help her, she's mad at me. So, this is mommy Diana, they can't see your face getting closer. I know, but they still can't see your face. And this is mama, yeah, getting closer, they can't. And then here's the little.
Now or never! No, okay.
Come on, sweetie. Okay, Darby, Darby refuses to be introduced, but.
Well, you have a great. There is Darby. I'm glad, like I shared at school, I wish we could be all at the community center like we usually do, but this is the next best thing, and you did a great job, so congratulations Stella.
Thank you!
Thank you so much Stella. Questions?
I don't have any questions Stella, but I just want to tell you that no matter what you do in life, just keep being you, because you are hilarious and you are an awesome person. So I don't care if you answer reading questions, just you keep being you, because you're pretty awesome.
Thank you!
Well said, well said. Can you come to all our meetings?
Yeah.
What's your availability on March 1st?
All their meetings?
Uh, sure.
Well, thank you so much for joining us, it's been a pleasure to get to know you, and I hope we get to see you again.
Thank you, you too!
Thank you Stella. Thank you, Principal Dory. With that, somebody has to follow Stella, so Liz Mitchell's first board report, I think, and Principal Engeldinger will introduce her.
Yeah, I'm happy to introduce Liz Mitchell. Like you said, Mr. Leonard, that is not an easy act to follow. Totally, totally handle it. Stella did a great job, and if she is available for all the future board meetings, I mean, I'm volunteering. No, I'm happy to introduce Liz Mitchell, she is the co-president of the Student Council. You've met Mia Hansen at our other board meetings, and Liz was available to talk to you tonight. She is the daughter of Melissa and Mark Mitchell. She's a senior this year, like I said, a co-president, and this is really good timing, because I also wanted to say thank you to the Student Council for a really super fun snow week. You know, hybrid, hybrid model and all, they pulled off a really, really fun week for everybody. Teachers and students alike enjoyed it. So Liz, I'll let you fill them in on all the activities.
Okay, well, thank you for that, so I mostly will be talking about snow week tonight. So as Ms. Engeldinger just said, we just got done with it, and I think it was very successful and fun. So to start out snow week, the Friday before, all of the Student Council members actually came in on a Friday and helped decorate the commons to make it more festive and just to really get people excited. And I think it looked really great, and it's really just fun, like walking into school and seeing decorations, especially when we're only going to school like two days a week, it just makes it more exciting and fun and like different. And then to actually start snow week, we had a lot of different activities going. So we had our own medallion hunt with different clues, and that was found. And then we had a snow creations contest, which it may not have been the best week to do it, considering how cold it was. We still had people outside making different snow creations. And then we had two dress-up days this year, which was Monday and Tuesday were sports slash Olympics. And people got pretty creative, I saw some full hockey gear and some skiers. And then Wednesday and Thursday was Met Gala, and can I just say, that was probably one of my favorites, because we got to see everyone's prom dresses and all the guys all dressed up. And then another thing we did is we had this huge Valentine wall in the commons, so students were able to write on hearts and stick them up on the wall, and then you could find Valentine's written to yourself. And then during lunches, we played different videos for students to watch. And the first one we played on Monday and Tuesday was actually a pep fest video that our senior Student Council members filmed and created of all the candidates. And I think it was probably one of our best pep fests so far, because we could edit it together and stuff. And it was a good alternative to not being able to do one in person. And then Wednesday and Thursday, we showed all of the candidates' videos, like campaign videos that they put together. And I think those were all really funny. And then finally, we ended snow week on Thursday with coronation, which was put together by the junior Student Council members. And overall, I think snow week was like really fun, and it was just really exciting to like do something differently, especially like with COVID, it's so hard to like get excited about school, but I thought everybody really enjoyed it.
Excellent, thank you. Questions for Ms. Mitchell? Well, it's really early, but do you have plans for after graduation? Because my kid needs some ideas.
Um, myself currently, I have, I know I'm going to go to a four-year college. I just don't know which one exactly yet, and I am planning on studying biology.
Excellent, that sounds great. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you so much for the report.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks Liz. Thank you for having me.
All right, we'll move on to action items. Our first action item is the middle and high school learning model transition plan adjustment, and I believe.
And I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, well, you're gonna, sorry. We can make a motion, but you have a, you have a plan to present as well?
Sure.
Well, I just wanted to note that during the study session, we went over a plan that has really about the middle school changes, and it's grade five would be starting on March 1st, and staff planning days would be March 25th and 26th. The sixth and seventh grade would start in person on March 15th with planning days for the 11th and 12th. And then grade eight through 12, and rock band would start on March 22nd in person with planning days on the 18th and 19th. And I want to say that this was, this was developed with the guidance and the information that we had at the time, and yesterday, at about 8 o'clock AM, we learned that at 10 AM we would get new guidance, and then it was announced at noon yesterday that there was some new guidance coming out from, from the governor and from MDE. We're continuing to work through that guidance and what that means. And so the plan that we have before you is the very best plan that we have right now, today. And we'll continue to do work, and if, if we're able to make some adjustments and bring students in earlier, we would like, like to be able to do that. We're not quite ready to, to roll out a plan for that, because we just got it yesterday, the new guidance. But we would like the option of being able to do that. So I guess our recommendation is that we, we accept this plan as, as the latest that it would be, and have the opportunity to bring students back earlier if we're able to. And the reason I'm asking for that is, it takes time to, to bring the school board together. We have to give at least a 72-hour notice, and we just want to be able to give people as much notice as we can and, and make some changes work more quickly if we're able to, so. We're asking you to accept this plan and give us the opportunity to make it sooner if we're able to.
Great, and Dr. Soderland, I didn't want to, I'm sorry for cutting you off, but.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to direct the superintendent to return middle and high school students to full-time in-person no later than proposed. And if given the opportunity, we authorize Superintendent Gronseth to return the students earlier.
Excellent, I appreciate that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Excellent, we have a motion and a second, and now we, we have discussion, and thank you, Dr. Soderland. Thank you, Chairman Carlson, I, I appreciate that. And as we've noticed throughout this pandemic, things can change quickly, and there's new information. And I think this board has been pretty steadfast over the last several months about wanting to return all of our kids that want to return to in-person learning, to in-person learning, and to do that as soon as, as the district felt ready. And we appreciate that that is a moving target, because things like when people get vaccinated, and what the governor is saying, and the conversations that we, that are ongoing and evolving, that that, that always is going to be a moving thing. And I, I think that the four hours or so discussion that this board has had just in the last two meetings about this have really given, given you the understanding that we want to bring kids back as soon as possible, and we understand that you're in the best position to tell us when that is, and so I really appreciate this, this motion that gives you the authority to do that. It doesn't give you the authority to not bring kids back till June, but it does give you the authority to bring students back no later than March 22nd, and if the opportunity arises, earlier.
Thank you.
What other discussion?
I'm excited, I'm so excited.
Yeah, I was really pleased by the governor's press release or his ongoing, you know. You could tell he had a spring in his step, and the entire staff did. This was good news, they were happy to be giving it, they're happy to be having, you know, the data support in this decision, I'm very happy about it. I, I just, I'm sure we all couldn't be more pleased. So, thank you, community, for doing what is necessary to keep us all safe and moving forward. I feel like, like we're getting pretty close.
Absolutely, I would just like to add too, that earlier today, the state upgraded its website and updated it, and that is a really long URL, but if you go to mn.gov/covid19, and then some more forward slashes, but if you just search on that, there is a way for the general public now to sign up for a vaccination appointment. I don't think there was any promise of when that will be. There's questions that you fill out, and I think they're basing, you know, how soon people get vaccines based on your answers to that and the area that you live and the availability of vaccines, but I just encourage everyone to get on that list. And when that email was sent out, I sent it out to other people, because we received those instructions. And one of my good friends said, look, I, I want other people to get it first. And I said, I really appreciate that feeling, but that, if you sign up, the professionals will do that. And so if you don't sign up, they don't necessarily know that you want the vaccine. So everybody signing up for this will let the state and let county public health understand how many doses of the vaccine ultimately we're going to need to have, and then they will give it to you when you are eligible. And I just, I can't say enough, and I don't know if there are ways for us to get that message out to our district parents and families and district residents that, you know, please, please sign up on the website. That's the, that's the easiest and best thing for you to do at this point.
We can definitely send out that message. We did send it out to staff today, and we can share that with families, because it is for the general public to sign up, and that, that URL was mn.gov/vaccineconnector. And so anyone can go to that website, and we'll make sure that we email that out too.
Thank you, and I realized that was a little off-topic, I was just excited about it.
Yeah.
Any more discussion, because clearly I will just keep talking forever.
Well, I just want to say, I was obviously very, very excited yesterday with Governor Walz's announcement, and I loved his analogy of that we're now on offense, I'm so excited that we finally have the ball, and we can move forward. And I'm thanking the administrators and teachers ahead of time for the work they're going to put in to make that happen, so. But I'm super excited. I was with Drew, could see the little spring in my step, so we're headed in the right direction, so.
Excellent. Well, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Excellent, thanks everyone, pay equity report.
Thank you, this is a report that we have to do every few years, and we have an outside source that provides that report for us, and I think I will hand it off to Mr. Regner to give us some more of the details of that.
Thanks Bill, like you indicated, it's a report we do every three years. It's required, I think by the state, and I think mostly all the, all the businesses and, and government units have to do it. It's started a number of years back, you know, I look back here, and I can't go back to when we, how long we've been doing it. We used Kathleen Murphy out of Murphy Consulting out of the cities. We put a lot of the work together, and then she, she kind of put it all together to send into the state, and she runs, she kind of has a test model to run it through to see if we're compliant with the different areas that we need to be in with on the pay equity. And it's basically a pay equity, so you're not paying females less than males in comparative positions. And it gets pretty complicated, but when Kathleen ran the numbers through, we passed on all three of the areas that we needed to, and so what happens then is it goes into the state, basically. And usually, I think since I've been here, it takes probably four, five, six months to get the final up or down on it. Like I said, we, we tentatively, with Kathleen's model, we pass it off, the state has a final say. They may come back with some questions if a lot of things have changed or whatever, but basically it's here. It has to go in by January 31st, and we, we met at the Person Health Committee in January and went through this kind of at a little more length. And because it, we need some numbers from the end of the year, so it's really a quick timeframe to turn things around. So basically, it's a report that we're required to send in. Tentatively, it looks like we passed all the compliance issues as far as, as our pay scales, and we just need to wait probably four, five, six months to hear back from the state if they have any questions or if they approve it. Like I said, we've done it for a number of years, you know, back 20, 30 years, probably even more. So it's every three years that it comes up, so. It was pretty brief on that, but if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer and go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Regner, any questions? No, I think you described that pretty well. Is there a motion to accept the pay equity report?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the pay equity report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. The athletic training contract.
Thank you, I do want to say that I, I noticed that the contract was not included in, in the packet. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about the process. We have had athletic training services through a program at Gus Davis, and they're, because of some changes they're going to be making to their program, we were in the need to find a new partner for athletic trainers. We did hear a few proposals. for athletic trainers. We did hear a few proposals and had chosen the Mayo as having the best proposal. Their focus was really on not only athletic training, but looking at other ways that they could support the district, as well as working with our students, becoming involved in our health occupations courses, and just other ways that they can be involved in the school district. They were able to provide us with more services at a lower cost than we had been paying before. And so with the absence of the contract attached to this, I would say that your action could be to direct us to develop a contract to bring to you in the future. That would give us the okay to work with Mayo to develop that contract, and we could bring the contract to you at a future time. If that works for you.
Yeah, I think that might be a good idea for us to be able to vote on something that we know.
Does that work for you, Mr. Regner?
Yeah, I know I was talking a little bit with Jordan, really spearheaded this thing. And it was a good, we'll work with Stephanie, I think it was, and get an actual contract involved and put together.
So who is, was this like co-curricular committee, or who worked to determine the best court? Because I know the athletic trainer's always been kind of a thing that's obviously very important. So.
Yeah.
Go ahead. We were both there.
Yeah, we were both at the co-curricular committee. It was presented to us, and it's a great deal for our district. So.
Okay.
And we've had a longstanding relationship with Gus Davis. Nothing happened there. We're not severing the relationship because of a, you know, because it wasn't working out. It was working out for both, but there are reasons why it's not, we just can't, we won't be able to go forward with them.
Yeah. In order to be athletic training certified now, you need a master's. And Gus Davis is completely undergrad work. And so they're trying to add a master's program in athletic training. They're working on it very hard, but that, right now, that's not going to work. Because what we used to, it was like a grad assistant position almost, where they were certified athletic trainers going to school in Mankato and helping out at Gus Davis and helping out with us. And now that the requirements have changed, they totally recognize that we needed to go a different direction.
So but with this contract, it'll be certified athletic trainers, not people coming in that are training trainers, right?
Right. Correct. Yes, as the main person. I think it was brought up in the meeting that Mayo may work with Gus Davis in bringing in their trainers. The students that are learning to be athletic trainers are not allowed to treat anybody. They need a certified athletic trainer there to be a supervisor. Like if they're taping an ankle, they can tape an ankle if the certified athletic trainer is there. So.
And what is our commitment in terms, I know, and I probably think that I know something, and I'm just asking a question, but I honestly don't know. Like, what is our commitment to having a trainer at each home event? Or is it just, I mean, what is our, are we, I don't think we have one at every home event, or do we? Or should we?
No. You know, we are required to have athletic training services, but they tend to prioritize where they are. One of the good, one of the nice things about Mayo is that they do have access to multiple trainers that could be at more than one event at a time. But they try to go with the high-contact sports to have the trainer in person, although they'd be available to any athlete that needed them.
Yeah, I think it was that there's some sports that are higher risk than others. And some sports, like swimming, you just need to be on call. You know, you need to be available to come if they need you. So.
Gotcha. Cool. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Having this discussion, now I realize we don't have the actual contract. Would it be, would it be amenable to the board as a whole to, knowing that this contract isn't for more money than the previous contract, it falls within our budget, and it's not for less services, that the contract be brought back in the consent agenda at an upcoming meeting and approved through that process? Or does it need to be a separate agenda item for people?
And these services don't start until summer?
We got time.
Yeah. Either way.
I don't know. I think it would be nice to maybe, in case there is questions that come up, and then maybe Jordan could be on too. Not, I mean, he doesn't need to come here. I know, trying to add more work to the poor guy's plate, but you know, might be nice if anybody has a question.
Since it is an action item, do we need a motion to table this for a future meeting?
Yep.
Yeah. Which is a motion, I believe, right?
Yep.
All right, I move to table action item three, which is the athletic training contract. I don't believe we have a target date, but it will come back at another regularly scheduled full meeting of the board.
And I believe I heard, I believe I heard consensus to go forward with developing that contract and bringing it to you. So.
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
Excellent. We have a motion and a second. Any further conversation? All right. Hearing none. Motion to table the athletic training contract until there is a contract. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carries. All right. You told us about this last week. Real estate title adjustment resolution, and this will be a board resolution. But.
Go ahead. Right. I spoke to this at the study session, that in 1980, there was an exchange of deeds between defining a property between a school district property and a community member's property. And both of those deeds incorrectly described that property. Instead of the southerly access to grace, it should be northerly. We now have corrected deeds, and the board needs to pass a resolution to accept those, that new description. There's nothing about the property or anything that's changing. We're just making this correction by resolution.
How did this come about? Like?
I believe the community member was looking at selling their property.
I gotcha.
And needed the description to be.
Correct.
Correct.
It's important.
I make a motion that we amend the real estate quitclaim deed, I believe it is, or?
Actually, it's a resolution.
Oh, okay.
So you'll have to read the resolution.
And what page is the?
I was going to say we have the background. It says like in 1980, this.
Sarah, where's the resolution?
I believe in the past, we've just taken a roll call vote for resolutions. Am I wrong?
But do we need to see the resolution, or?
I'm just wondering, what page is the resolution written?
Exhibit. What do you, it's like, is it a resolution?
I think so.
Right. Excuse me. So it's not just me? What's that?
It's not just me that has a resolution.
No, it's kind of a pinch point here.
I feel like we should have like some Jeopardy theme music right now.
We'll sit down.
I have a hard time not talking when it's quiet, so I'm going to maybe stick them in my mouth.
You can talk.
I don't think you want to just open up the mic to me.
The resolution was not included when we had it at the study session and did not get included. So. If you'd like to read it?
I think Dr. Soderland was going to make the resolution.
We actually had that at the study session.
Yeah.
We just don't have it right now. I'd like to make a resolution authorizing the execution of a quitclaim deed to the Anders J. Bjorling Revocable Trust and accepting a quitclaim deed from the Anders J. Bjorling Revocable Trust.
I don't know if you have to, do you want all the whereas's?
I don't think we've ever read the whereas's.
Very good.
I might be wrong, Ben, but.
Nope.
The State High School League one.
That seemed pretty clear.
Yep.
Do we have a second to the resolution?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the resolution. We'll start with Treasurer Carlson.
Aye.
Dr. Soderland?
Aye.
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 Aye. Resolution carries unanimously. Excellent. Moving on to our last agenda item, which, let me get to the correct page, is also a resolution?
No, that's just a motion for the calendar.
Right on. Just a regular motion. So Superintendent Gronseth?
Very good. We have met with our internal teams, talked about the calendar for quite a few times, and had several different versions that we looked at, and then met with the calendar committee and went over that as well. I think the most notable changes are going from daytime conferences during the year for our K-8 students to having all evening conferences, and the inclusion of a week-long spring break, which will be attached to what is traditionally Easter weekend for those who celebrate Easter, as Good Friday is included in many of our contract languages. But the week is created partially by days that are making up for the time that teachers spend during the evening for conferences. So we were able to move them around a bit and put that together as a week. I know that traditionally, we've looked at two years at a time. But with this kind of change, where we're trying something new, we're most comfortable just looking at one year. Although we have the next year developed, it would be an easy adoption, should we decide that we want to do that next year. So we have the 21, 22 school year calendar for your approval.
Great. And I want to thank teachers for their willingness to move those conferences to the evening. I realize that that is less convenient for them, but it is, in all likelihood, much more convenient for the majority of our parents. And I applaud that change and their willingness to do that. So. Is there a motion to approve the 21, 22 school calendar?
This, I'll make the motion to approve the calendar, mostly because I'm really excited that we have a week spring break. That'll be good for the seasonal people who don't get vacation in the summer. So.
I'll second it.
Absolutely. Great. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carries. Thank you very much. That is the end of our action items. We have one information item tonight, and that is the first reading of policies. And Dr. Soderland would like to introduce.
Well, I had a comment on the policy.
Okay.
So Superintendent Gronseth, if you want to.
Sure. I will say that the policy committee is putting in their time. This does represent really two months of policy committee meetings. The last month's policy committee landed after the board meeting for January with the org meeting in there. So they have really been working a lot, going through all of these pieces. Along the way, we have run into some policies that we've said, I think we need more people involved. And so we have looked at a few and then asked our principals and staff to really dive in and develop some committees that are going to be working on some of the language around things like our discipline policy or our bullying policies, and get our community and our students involved with developing those as well. And so as well as the policy committee, there's some subcommittees directed to come up with some language that will be considering likely in June. Because some policies just make sense to adopt in the summer so that we can implement with new language in the fall. So there are quite a few policies here for your first reading. Many of them don't have significant changes, and some of them do. And so we've worked with our principals to make sure that everyone was in agreement and making sure that we are getting that language into our handbooks for the coming year. I don't know if anyone on the committee has specific things that they want to pull out?
I don't really have anything in particular I want to pull out more than just as people are, I mean, because there's a lot of policies here. We're not going to obviously talk about each individual one, but for anybody that watches and stays up at night and just wonders about policies, I mean, they can look at the agenda. I guess this is the first reading, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, this is a time for discussion, and we're not trying to, we would be here for a long time if we actually went through all these, trust me, because I'm on the policy committee. But yeah.
It's been a very interesting process. And I think that we've really put some thought into a lot of it. I mean, we really dig into it. So I'm happy with what we've been doing so far.
So in any of these edits or changes or modifications, are we deviating from MSBA's recommendations?
No, there are a few of the policies. One in, let's hear, the, in the tobacco policy, we have included language that would allow indigenous students or indigenous adults to carry tobacco for ceremonial reasons. And that was not in the original language, but felt it was important to include, to recognize traditional practices and to make allowances for that. There was also in that policy, sometimes they have optional paragraphs. This one actually had an optional paragraph where a district needed to decide if they would allow for advertising or marketing or other involvement with companies that had pretty much anything to do with tobacco or tobacco products. And we opted to strike that paragraph because we weren't sure, not that we condone the use of tobacco, but we know that we have businesses, like, you know, a gas station or a restaurant or a bar that may sell tobacco products, and we didn't know how far that would go. So we struck that, knowing that should the topic come up, we know where our limits are as a school district and what we mean by that. So there were some things like that that aren't really deviations, but slight modifications.
Okay.
The only other thing I can think of, and this is little, and I'll try to maybe keep that in mind more. We'll take some better notes when that happens. But an example of something that we went different to was on the 501, the school weapons policy. Under the exceptions, they had, an exception would be if a gun or a knife show held on school property. And we just took it out because we're not going to do gun and knife shows on school property. So by having it in there, kind of, you know what I mean? So we just, we didn't have it in our current policy, so we're not putting it in this policy because we're just not going to do them. Because it's basically saying the exception would be to have a weapon if you have. Because it's basically saying the exception would be to have a weapon if you have that on your property, which I think we all agree we don't, we just wouldn't do. Right?
Yep, and any of the changes that we have made to those policies are included in the minutes for the policy committee as well. So you can see if we added any language or struck any language in the minutes.
One of the things that I really like is we're putting all the sites of where you can find that information, and, and I really like that we didn't have that before, so it's examples of where you could find the information. So I really like adding that part.
Like the statutes?
Yes.
Yeah. Did that make sense that I said you were kind of giving me?
Oh, no, no, no. I was just, sorry, I'm just not used to wearing shooters.
Well, I know. My glasses are a little off, too, so.
I, I saw that the 15% tip thing is still a thing. That's, did you guys end up discussing that at all? Because that usually takes a while. Last time I was on the.
I don't know. Maybe we, I don't know. Maybe we didn't get the memo that it was supposed to take a while. I don't know.
Oh, that's good. Well, no, it's great. So, because I, I mean.
We talked about that previously.
Yeah, because if, some people, they tip 20%. Some people, you know, and so if I, if I were to tip 20%, then who's doing the math to make sure that the 5% that I don't, there's a 5% I don't get back from that amount, so. But anyways, I just, that was more curious than.
Yeah. Yeah, if I, if I may head into the weeds possibly a little bit, but one of the policies is chemical use and abuse. And I'm just going to jump in here with a brief story. Years ago, and, and nobody intentionally did anything wrong, and everybody's intentions are admirable and at the best, but one time in particular, I got called into a school meeting for one of my children, and it was told to me that my son had attention deficit. And during the meeting, it was recommended that he take Ritalin. And I went around the room and I listened to what everybody had to say, and then I asked what the medical background of the people that were in this meeting had, and they had none. And I've actually had that happen three times, three different, three different boys. And if you don't mind, I'd like to just bring to our attention this concept here that attention deficit hyperactivity disorder diagnosis have increased 250% since 1997. 12% of all children are currently diagnosed with it. And fit, amphetamines are the drug of choice to treat ADHD. And most amphetamines are what we call C2 drugs, so they're controlled substances. There are no illegal drugs. People always say that's an illegal drug. There are no illegal drugs. They're controlled. So a C1 drug would be like LSD. The next one category down below that is a C2 drug. And that would be where we would have drugs such as cocaine. People don't realize, but that's still a, a drug that we can use. We got morphine, we got Vicodin, oxycodone, so on and so forth. And then we have the ADHD drugs, which are, you know, Dexedrine, Alderol, Desoxin, which is actually methamphetamine, Ritalin, Vivance, Concerta, et cetera, et cetera. Anyway, those are C2 drugs, and here's what the DEA says about these. They are drugs with high potential for abuse, with use potentially leading to severe psychological or physical dependence. So that's, all these drugs are put into that category. So these are dangerous drugs. Nationwide, amphetamine prescribing has dramatically increased. Minnesota, amphetamine prescribing has increased 200% since 2011. Boys are diagnosed and treated with amphetamines. If you look at the rates, it's somewhere between two and a half to five times more frequent boys are prescribed this than girls. Some school districts, it's reported that 30% of the boys are on amphetamines for ADHD. Many prescriptions, as a, as a pharmacist, I, I had a drugstore in town here for 23 years, so I got to see this, but many of the prescriptions, many times they say, take these drugs Monday through Friday. Don't take them on the weekends and stop in the summer. So that, that's kind of interesting. Many children are prescribed amphetamines for the sole purpose of helping them do better in school. I think we need to be honest, and I want to make it clear, I am not telling anybody what to do. I'm not offering medical advice. I'm looking at this from about 50,000 feet down, having been in the community and in this field. And I'm just asking a question, and since this is one of our policies, it's on chemical use and abuse, I think this is appropriate to raise a couple of questions. So one thing that is, is a fact that the earlier a child uses a mood-altering substance, the greater the risk of developing drug addiction or alcoholism. Most children that take amphetamines for the treatment of ADHD were first flagged by schools. I think that's a pretty important point. Schools are essentially a referral center for the diagnosis and amphetamine prescribing. And I've handed out a lot of amphetamines over the years, and I heard that over and over again. Well, I got called into a meeting and took the child to the doctor, and here we are. Many children that take amphetamines are also given medications to help them calm down at night. Well, that makes sense. One thing that's of note is these drugs often irreversibly alter the child's brain chemistry. I'm not making a, a medical claim here. I'm just throwing this out, and there's children that this is a wonderful thing. I, I'm not against these drugs. I just, as a school district, I think we need to start thinking about this. I used to get, when I had the pharmacy, I'd get back-to-school sales from drug companies, and they'd have a picture of two or three kids with backpacks on, and it was a back-to-school amphetamine sale. That's true. Stock up, you get 10% discount if you buy so many bottles, because it was a back-to-school sale for amphetamines. The opioid epidemic started in the late 80s. I mean, this, and it coincides kind of like what we're doing with the amphetamines. You know, we hear about the opioid epidemic, and I believe there's a correlation here. So now the current trend is the drug companies are marketing amphetamines for use to adults for the treatment of ADHD. That used to, that was never the case, and I'm not criticizing anybody. I want to make that clear. I'm just, I want to bring this to everybody's attention. This is a multi-billion dollar a year industry, and these companies make money by selling these drugs. So I'm not recommending the discontinuation of amphetamines. I think they're great drugs if used properly. And I'm not trying to shame anybody. I just am asking the question here. Number one, have we created an education system that requires drugging children to meet our demands and requirements? I'd like each one of us to think about that. Have we created an education system that requires drugging children with, by definition, high potential for abuse and potentially leading to severe psychological or physical dependence? Are we creating, have we created a system that drugging children is required to meet our demands and requirements? And the second question, let me, let me say the first one one more time. Have we created an education system that requires drugging children to meet our demands and requirements? My second question is, as a school district, should we be diagnosing and recommending specific medications for children, that children should take? And that's all I have, and thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Could I?
Yeah, absolutely.
Speak to that a little bit? And I, Dr. Soderland and I have had some previous conversations on the same topic, and he knows, he knows where, where I stand as a father of two boys who's had some similar conversations. But I do want to say that I, the, the school district, and certainly I do not condone educators stepping in and recommending any kind of medication or that we would recommend that students be medicated. There may be times where it might be appropriate for us to suggest, you know, visiting with a family doctor or a medical professional if we, if we feel that that's a necessity. But I do want to say that our education system is designed to be more active than it used to be. We have things like smart rooms, and I know right, right outside of the district office, there's now a, a smart trail with the, you know, kids have the opportunity for more physical activity. We recognize that, that children, well, adults too, need opportunities to, to move, and that when we're more active, we learn better. And so I hope that as we continue to develop strategies, we are including lots of movement and a new, a new awareness of, of what Dr. Soderland is talking about is this, a movement away from medicating students. I would certainly encourage families to look at all kinds of alternatives before using medication, things like diet changes, activity changes, and that we encourage families to, to look into those alternatives as well. You're absolutely right. Educators are not medical professionals, even though you might think we might be getting close after dealing with so much COVID. But I, I thank you for your comments, and I, I don't disagree. It doesn't fit exactly with the policy, but it's a very valuable conversation.
Thank you both. You know, before we call a motion on this, I just, this has been a board for a long time that has worked with committees quite extensively. We have a lot of committees. We believe in the committee system. And to me, the work that you're doing, Vicky, Tracy, Bill, this exemplifies the best of that system. I don't think anybody would argue with us that our board meetings have been very short lately. There's a lot on our plate, just with COVID alone and learning model decisions that we're spending a lot of time on, and we should. If the full board was attempting to address these policy issues, we would never leave this room. And I just appreciate so much the work of the committee, but you have, I think I speak for all of us that aren't on the committee. You have our complete trust, and the fact that you're willing to take time to do a deep dive into this, and the negotiations committee will take a deep dive into working with our various employee groups, and the co-curricular committee takes a deep dive into co-curricular issues. That, that just helps the board, you know, finalize those decisions and make those decisions because of all of that legwork that just would not be possible for seven of us to attempt to do all of the time. And it, it really increases our capacity as a board to consider new ideas and to make important decisions. And so I really am appreciative of the policy committee in particular for really doing this great, great, important work.
Also important to know, because I just, I get concerned when people are like, you know, why don't we talk more about this? Is all the committee meetings are also if anybody's really bored. You can always see all the meetings online and, and come sit in on any committee meeting, too. I mean, just so people know that this isn't something we're trying to not talk about here. It's just like you said, we would be here for a very, very long time, so.
Absolutely. Well said. Thank you. We don't have to make a motion because this is first reading, so never mind. Any further comments about policy? All right, we'll move on to reports and building principles.
All right, so we'll start with preschool. We are, we are going right along in preschool. Things are going well. We made it through the cold temperatures last week, got those little ones in the building and out really quickly and safely, and they were all bundled up, so we were happy to see that. Last week, we all, we did another early childhood screening where we had about 35 children ages 3 to kindergarten entrance come on in, and we do those screenings about three times a year. So our next screening will be in April, and we'll be sending out a mailing to families about that. Certainly, we had all of our COVID protocols in place, and it went quite smoothly. Typically, at the end of February, we have a school readiness open house so that families can come and learn about our programming and register their children for fall preschool programming. This year, with the COVID restrictions and just wanting to be a little bit more cautious and thoughtful, we will have the building open later, maybe in the summer, early fall. We're putting together a virtual open house for families, so we'll make sure that we get that link out and, and make that accessible. So we're excited about that. And then in, in my HR hat, I do want to just share a little bit about vaccine opportunities. At previous board meetings and study sessions, we had wanted to ensure that all of our staff in St. Peter's schools were offered the COVID-19 vaccine, and I'm really happy to report that we have been able to offer all employees of St. Peter's schools that opportunity. We sent out a quick survey, a two-question survey, you know, what's your role in St. Peter's schools? And have you had the vaccine? Yes, no, if no, you know, is it because you don't want it? Are you waiting for an appointment? Do you have an appointment scheduled? That type of thing. And we had 184 respondents to date. 104 teachers who have, who, 104 teachers responded, and we have 156 folks out of that 184 that responded that they have received the vaccine. Certainly, that's an optional survey, but it just gives us the information that we're offering it to all of our employees. So that is all I have, unless anyone has questions.
Etive, that included like substitutes and saints overtime? And when you say employees, you are Big Ten employees?
Yes, so thank you. I did have that written down. Thanks for, for asking that question. So our first batch of doses, we had about 14 offered to us through the state through their pilot program. So we had an initial wave of 14 employees who were able, able to go. And then the next weekend, we had 45. And then the next week, we were really able to hit it strong. We had about 90 folks that were able to go. And then in the fourth week of that vaccine distribution through Nicollet County, we were able to offer substitutes, coaches, both full-time and part-time saints overtime staff. And certainly, we are still offering that, and so we've sent out an email to all, all of our groups, just letting them know if they're interested to give me a call or an email, and we'll make sure we get them on the list. So we've been very pleased with our partnership with Nicollet County once we got this started. It's been very efficient and right on, so appreciate that.
Thank you.
So Etive?
Yes.
Has the second dose been offered as well?
So many of our, well, our first wave of 14, I believe that was last weekend, that they were offered their second. Our wave of 45 were to get those this weekend. There has been some delays and some appointment reschedules. I don't know the details, but I have heard from employees that because of the weather in, in the Texas area, that that vaccine has been slower getting here, so they're needing to reschedule some of those appointments. And then I'll use myself as an example. I received the vaccine on February 3rd, and I already have my appointment now for my follow-up dose on March 3rd. So when, when you get the first dose, they are scheduling you for your second as well.
Thank you.
Etive, I often hear about families and about preschool, and is that all going to be on the website then? Or will we be able to, and do we have a date that, you know, those parents, those three-year-olds are just drooling. They want to get their kids signed up, so what kind of timeline?
We're always excited for that, that's for sure. Typically, we would hold our open house of the last Saturday in February, so we're sticking to that timeline to get that virtual open house out. And the information available, we'll have that on the district website through our social media. And certainly, they can call our office and have that sent to them, scanned to them, however they'd like to register. So we're excited about that. We're looking forward to more business as usual next fall for preschool. But the kids. But the kids, the staff, teachers, everyone has been doing just a great job just making this work. Parents have been fabulous and and just their understanding and making it work. So.
Thanks.
And we've created a couple new things too with our drop-off in the morning. Typically, parents would bring kids in, but now we've got a loop similar to South, so we're getting them trained in. And it's really worked quite well. Last week, I would say it was a bit of a challenge with those sub-zero temperatures, but we're we're pretty hearty here in Minnesota, so we made it work.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'm guessing it's on to South. And I have to say, it just feels so good to finally have a principal's report where we're able to talk about some of the things that are are actually going on and they're kind of typical routine things that we do this time of year rather than the protocols and how we're getting back into our our routines. So falling back into our routines very, very easily. Access testing started today and that is being done for all of our ELL students. And at the kindergarten level, it is a one-on-one test, so that will take us through about mid-March. We're hoping to have all of the access tests done for both our kindergarten and first grade students. Next week, we will be celebrating our Readathon, which was supposed to be held in November. And so we postponed it. The students did collect pledges from families and friends. So we just kept everything and put it on hold. And next week, we will be celebrating on the twenty-fifth, that we'll have our Readathon day. So there'll be some fun activities within the classrooms. Kids are wearing Read My Shirt. So so different logos on their shirts that day. And then we would like to congratulate Ms. Banks' first grade class and they earned the pizza party. So they'll be having a pizza party with the principal the following week. We're also excited to announce that online kindergarten registration became effective today. So we had put something, if you get any questions, we had put some information in the utility bill. And at that time, we were not sure that we would have the online system going. So we did ask people to call in if they didn't get something by the end of of the January. Well, at that point, we knew that we were pretty close to being able to launch an online program. So about two hundred cards were mailed home to families today. And on there, there will be a link to the online registration. So if someone doesn't get a card and they do have a kindergarten student, I would invite them to call South. We'll get their information. We'll get that information out to them. They can also go right to the district website and that link is right there for them. And if they have any questions or they need assistance, just feel free to call South and we will make sure that we get your child registered. We will be doing hopefully some kind of a, we're calling it kindergarten fund in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. We're not sure. We're hoping that in the spring, the the COVID conditions are lifted enough that we can invite families in to take a look at the school. It will look very different than what our kindergarten registration nights have looked like in the past. But with online registration, that was a real, one of the the main purposes of of doing our registration night early last year. So in in past years, so if we can get that part taken care of online, we can really just focus on introducing them to this environment. And we can do that later on in the spring. And if we can't do it in the spring, we will do it super early in the fall then, prior to the start of the school year. And as you heard in the consent consent agenda, South Elementary was the recipient of a fifty thousand dollar anonymous donation. And I have to say that this donation, we were made aware of it in December, but we really didn't have a lot of details other than we were asked to put together a wish list. We didn't even have a dollar amount at that point. It was talk to your teachers. See what are some things that we feel like we could use at school. It can be everything from enhancement of classrooms such as games, puzzles, making our school more inclusive for all students. So what we did as our leadership team and all of the teachers submitted ideas, we then submitted them to our donor who looked it over and said, looks great. We still didn't still didn't know what the dollar amount was until it arrived last week in the district office and it was for fifty thousand dollars. It was done through the St. Paul and Minnesota Foundation is who's facilitating the grant. And what was shared was that this donor really was inspired by watching TV and seeing everything the teachers are doing for kids and wanted to just reach out. And the main purpose really is to help support teachers and students here at South. So we're excited to get started on looking at what what some of those areas are that we can be supporting our students here at South and just very, very grateful for this generous donation. And I'll pass it on to Noi.
Thank you so much. Follow that, Darren.
Yeah, I I don't think I can. Greetings from North Elementary School. And then Doreen, I'm not sure if you said what day you're buying everybody pizza. I was wondering if the other principals could join in so that pack a lunch.
You have the wrong idea of what with the principal being Mr. Doreen.
But I am.
Principal.
Oh, gotcha. Oh, gotcha. No, greetings from North, everybody. It's things are going really well. It's nice to have the building warmed up with lots of student action, learning. You know, I agree with Mrs. Elke. You know, I I like to look back on other school board meetings, items that I share at those meetings. And usually in February, I'm talking about Arts and Academic Night, which is a great evening with very talented performers and science fair and things like that and kindness retreat. And fortunately, those things aren't happening this year, but you know, we have, we're definitely warmed up with I Love to Read Month going on. So bingo, I Love to Read Bingo going on every week and, you know, Read My Shirt and dressing up for I Love to Read Month and and other challenges. So that's going on. And then also a collaboration, brand-new collaboration going on with the high school students and some fourth graders, which is really neat. It's I I think it has to do a lot with, you know, some of the silver linings that have come with the challenging time that we're living with right now. But the independence that kids have with their iPads and just able to reach out beyond kind of time and space. We have Matt Lewis, who's one of our fourth-grade teachers, who partnered up with Maggie Carlson, who's a counselor up at the high school. And they created a fourth-grade friends program for the students. Actually, I believe it's just any high school student, but most of the students are in National Honor Society that have signed up to be like a fourth-grade buddy, if you will. And the fourth graders are are to teach the high school buddies like what they're doing in reading and math. But you know, the basis of the program is just to connect via iPad with a fourth grader and high school student. And that's just getting off the ground. I've seen some advertisements and stuff out on the school digital displays, high school digital displays. So I think there are quite a few students that have signed up for that. And I just think it's really great, you know, high schools, kids, when they come in north, they pretty much just walk on water to the second, third, and fourth graders. So just to use that natural talent and ability to connect across our Google Meet iPads and and leverage some more engagement is just a is is just a great opportunity. So that's one of the big things. So that's it for North for now.
And at the middle school, you know, I think Ms. Elke must be a lot cooler than me because I'm not so sure. He said, what the principal will be that popular at the middle school? I don't know. The middle school got a little bit of makeover last week. We had student council members who volunteered some time to come in early the last couple days of the week to decorate for Valentine's Day. And what was super impressive is those student council members provided a Valentine's Day card for every single student in the building. They taped them to their locker and it was a positive message that was kind of in the shape of like a conversation heart, those candies. And it was really fun to see our our kids come back in and and see that positive message jump in the locker. Next, we have about thirty-five of our students, fifth through eighth grade, that are working currently working on this year's theater production. This year's theater production is a series of short mysteries that will ultimately be filmed, spliced together for one feature that will be streamed in late later in April. So very excited for that. And then lastly, you know, we at the middle school are rocking the hybrid right now. Things are going as as well as they can. But we are definitely excited to be welcoming students back in in the very near future. So our custodians and Mr. Alger, our dean of students, very busy moving furniture around chairs, tables, and dividers to make sure that we can welcome those kids back in as safely as possible. So very excited for that.
Good evening from the high school or my kitchen, I guess I would say. We have we have some fun stuff to report from the high school too. Our our theater season is in between the one-act play and the the spring musical, which is usually a fall musical, but but we're hoping to be able to pull off a live a live production, a little bit smaller cast and crew. But the theater department is working hard. I would also like to add that our one-act play moved on, moved on to sections this year. They did a great job. Our our team, our team did, I hate to call it Brady Bunch style, a Brady Bunch style show that was really pretty amazing. And and if if you haven't had the opportunity to see that, I'm not sure if it's still linked on the on the website or not. But but you should you should watch that. It was it was an impressive production by our theater department. And for the second year in a row, our St. Peter High School mock trial team is off to state. Former board member Bob Meeks would be very proud right now. I know he was always very impressed by the fire mock trial program and team. So that is led by Dan Clark and they're a great bunch of kids too. So that will be taking place, I believe, sometime during the first week of March. We also have every year, not every year, every year since we've moved out to the new building, we've had what we refer to as Opportunity Day, which is the day that all of our juniors take the either the ACT, Accuplacer, or ASVAB test and our sophomores take the pre-ACT. In a in a normal year, that's a lot of organizing and labor for our student services department. But this year especially with with COVID protocols and virtual field trips being the only way to to manage some of some of the activities that they have for our ninth and twelfth grade classes. Are I just have to thank Maggie Carlson and Janice Akora for all the work that they're doing on that. It's also a date that for any families who are still tuned in tonight, keep that date, March second on your calendar. There's there's already been some information sent out to families, but stay tuned for permission slips for all that kind of good stuff that comes along with that big date. We also have a new, before our next board meeting, hopefully I'll be able to report that all kinds of kids attended what Dave Kennedy, our credit recovery math teacher coined Save Yourself Saturday.
Oh, my goodness.
Janice Akora and Maggie Carlson and our credit recovery teachers met to to brainstorm some additional ideas to help those kids who are so close to 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 get them over that that percentage and make it through some of their classes. So we have so far a handful of of our teaching staff who are coming into the high school on Saturday, February twenty-seventh, to work with kids who need a little bit of extra time with their teachers to to help get them through some of their classes. So thank you again to Janet and Maggie and especially to those teachers who are willing to willing to work on a Saturday to help kids over that hump. And I will hopefully report on all kinds of attendees at our next meeting.
Thank you so much. Any questions for administrators? Thank you. Superintendent Crosshut.
Sounds like I have to get the dates for the pizza party and Save Yourself Saturday. We have all kinds of great things going on in the district and it's it's fun to hear about things that are non-COVID related and we're starting to hear more and more of those. And we are certainly looking forward to welcoming students back to more in-person. But I did want to just reiterate again that distance learning will continue to be an option for any families who out of necessity are choosing it or are choosing it because it it just feels safer for their families or works better for their families. We currently do have over two hundred students who are in full-time distance learning. And we will be continuing to to serve those students through distance learning. In many cases, we have dedicated teachers to providing distance learning at our lower grade levels. And at the upper grade levels, all of our students or all of our staff are serving both students in person and through distance learning. So schools will be reaching out as as we continue to develop plans for transitioning to in-person to to find out if there are any changes to what people are using as their as their learning models. So for instance, if someone is now in hybrid but isn't comfortable coming to all in-person, we'll be asking them to let us know that they would like all distance. And if they're all distance and they feel like, well, I we're ready to come back to school, we want to know that too so that that can be planned for as we as we go forward.
I know you're going to reach out to everyone, but if someone's listening and wants to do that, should they wait for that correspondence? Is there someone they should relay that information to now?
Well, I think all of our elementaries have already reached out to the to their their families. But our middle and high schools will be reaching out and it's probably easiest to get all that information at once. Although if you're if you're feeling anxious about it and just want to talk to somebody, I certainly encourage you to reach out to our schools and we'll be happy to to talk with you and make any arrangements.
Thank you.
I also want to recognize, you know, we we talked about Snow Week and we've talked about the Saturday. What is it? Save Yourself Saturday and all of the activities that our kids are involved in. And there is so much work going on behind the scenes by staff and by students, like student council, with all of their preparedness plans for every single event. And I have to say that I've read quite a few preparedness plans to this point. And our staff and our students are getting pretty proficient at determining, okay, you you want to do that? Then here's the way around that. Here's how we keep people safe in a COVID environment. And, you know, hand out candy at the girls' basketball game to parents for parent night. We're going to have them sitting on a table. They're going to have their name. They're going to be sitting there. They're going to go at varied times. And there are plans written for each and every every one of those. And our kids so want to have their traditions and some of the events that they know and love. And they've very creatively found ways to do things like Snow Week, like the events that are coming up. And I just appreciate all the the work and the time and the effort that is going into keeping keeping each other safe. It's those very mitigation strategies that they're developing that's allowing us to come back in that that make our schools a safe enough place for us to bring all of our students in. So I just want to recognize all the work and time that go into those plans that are making all this possible. And I did want to talk about the vaccines a little bit. We will send out that information again for all people to sign up for that vaccine. It doesn't mean that it's immediately available. It's for when it becomes available that they'll be able to contact you for you to make arrangements for that. That being said, there is some talk about the second vaccination. We we know that there there have been some people who have not felt well for a day or two after that second vaccination. We were really excited to have the number of staff able to get the vaccination. We're a little hesitant because so many of our staff went at the same time that they'll all be getting that second vaccination at the same time. We're a little concerned that we'll we'll be down a lot of employees after that. I'm sure they'll be fine, but they're going to have a day or two. And so while we're used to listening for maybe a last-minute cancellation when there's bad weather, I don't know, we may have a vaccination day here in the next few weeks. We'll just we'll continue to monitor and see how people are doing. And if if we reach a point that we wouldn't be able to staff effectively, there may be a day or two that we'd have to cancel school, but we will. But we will try to keep you in the loop as much as possible. And of course, whenever we make those decisions, whether it's weather-related or vaccine-related, you know, we will send that out through telephone, through social media, through email, through the media, all of, any way that we can get people the information, we want to make sure that that is going out, and in English, Somali, and Spanish, so that people get that message. And I am slowly getting acclimated to a southern climate. I know that, I've heard the rumblings that, you know, that superintendent's from up north, and we're going to have to let him know that it's cold out, because he never seems to think it's cold out. So I'm getting my lessons in climatology of southern Minnesota. And that is all I have to share this evening, as the superintendent report.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Crosscut? Thank you. We'll go around the table. Tracy, we'll start with you.
I'm excited, because I feel like we can see the light at the end of the tunnel. I was really excited hearing the principal reports, because I know, I don't know, the teachers have been under a lot of scrutiny lately in terms of, we need to get these kids back, and everybody's trying their best. But then to find out you have people that are still moving forward with like fourth-grade friends and "Save Yourself Saturday," and it's just hats off to all the teachers, because they are still putting in the hard work that needs to be done. But yeah, I can't wait.
Thank you.
Yeah, just being back here feels like we're on the downslide, and I'm so excited. I just think we haven't been all together like this in this room, so it's a good feeling. And I'm so excited that the kids are going to get back to school here really soon. I can't wait. I'll be listening to hear if they're going to start the next, you know, couple of weeks here, so it'll be exciting. I'm really happy for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was really happy to hear the governor address the state of Minnesota, asking people to change your plans, bring the schools back, it's time. If you haven't been making plans, make plans. I'm very thankful that we had been making plans.
Yeah.
And I know that just happened yesterday, and we have maybe an opportunity to go earlier or faster, great. I'm just happy that we have the green light to do that, and it's based on the data. We have evidence that shows that that's okay. Good. So I'm thankful that we're flexible. I'm thankful that we're going to be potentially moving even a little faster. I just think it's a good day. We've had good discussion about it. You can tell we all feel better about it, I think. So I'm just thankful.
I'm going to keep it short, just say I'm thankful. Thank you, everybody. Chair Leonard, I apologize for being just a little bit late, so I missed the consent agenda, but as treasurer, I want you to know that the bills are all in order.
Thank you. Excellent. I just have, you know, I just want to again thank everyone involved with those three donations to our district. I think that any time that happens, it's special, but this just seems like a time when there's so much focus inward at our own situations, and for all those people to take the time and the care and the generosity to reach beyond that and to give to the district and to, you know, see us as worthy of their donation and their trust means a lot. And it always means a lot, but it means an awful lot right now. And so thank you to those donors and the members of the church, and we just really, really appreciate all of them. Excellent. All right, well, thanks, everyone. Upcoming meetings of the school board. All those things I said about the policy committee earlier were certainly true and even more true now that I see that our study session is Monday, March 1st at 6:30 PM. And your policy review committee is Tuesday, March 2nd at 9:00 AM. So that's probably a 12, 13-hour difference. I appreciate all the time that you're giving the district. And then we have a regular school board meeting coming out March 15th at 6:30 PM, and that is back in this room and on the interwebs. So with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Excellent.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.